Most of you are ditching us after just a few minutes. It's still, it's still nice to look out and be able to say hello to people. So, welcome. If you will please join me for the flag salute.
I proudly pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Buffy.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here.
All right, we have several proclamations and a recognition tonight. Our first one is recognition of Driver of the Year 2022 Ricardo Ariando. Kinda close? All right, so we have... It just says Certificate of Recognition, the City Council of the City of Fortuna recognizes Ricardo as Regional Commercial 2022 Driver of the Year by the National Waste and Recycling Association. Signed, it was signed in April because he missed last meeting, but we are glad you are here tonight and that we actually get to meet you, and thank you for being safe out there on the roads, and congratulations.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the recognition. Rick's a great guy.
Our next proclamation is National Police Week, and Mike Losi is going to read that one for me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am proud to read the proclamation in recognition of the National Police Week, May 15 through the 21st. Whereas in 1962 President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as National Police Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls on is National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual rights of the free people, soldiers in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas it is known that every two days an American police officer dies in the line of duty, our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere. And whereas the City of Fortuna desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of our police officers, and now therefore Sue Long, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, proclaimed the week of May 15 to May 21, 2022, to be National Police Week, and called upon all citizens to give special honor and sincere appreciation to the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I further call upon our citizenry to make every effort to express our gratitude to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and families in safety each day and return knowing they are protected by people willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. This is signed the second day of May 2022 at the City of Fortuna in the State of California and in the witness thereof. Signed, Mayor Long, Mayor of Fortuna.
Who is going to accept this one? So we do have six of our officers here, well, five and our police chief, our lieutenant, so let's just give them a big hand for all these.
Lieutenant Everhart, and thank you on behalf of the department. I thought it was very fitting that Councilman Losi read this proclamation as, you know, he served himself, so thank you for that. We're grateful for the community we live in, that we do feel that gratitude from the city and from our community here, and thank you for honoring those that have made the ultimate sacrifice and those that continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate all you guys coming tonight, thanks for taking the time.
Yeah.
All right, our next one is 53rd Annual Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation, and Siana Emmons is our city clerk, Buffy is our deputy city clerk. Siana is sick today, so Buffy will be accepting this on both of their behalves. City of Fortuna Proclamation in recognition of the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through May 7, 2022. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, therefore I sue Long, Mayor of Fortuna, do recognize the week of May 1 through May 7, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerks, Siana Emmons and Buffy Gray, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Signed this second day of Fortuna, or second day of May in Fortuna. Buffy, do you want to say something?
Thank you very much for the recognition.
That's our Buffy. So I, I do have a short statement from Siana, she was sick today, and so she was unable to be here. She says, "I am extremely proud to work for the City of Fortuna. I am passionate about my work and being a municipal clerk. Many of my goals are in alignment with the City Clerks Association of California's Mission Statement, including promoting clerks through education, support, and communication. I appreciate having such a dedicated and reliable deputy clerk, Buffy Gray, and would like to thank her and all the other city staff, Katie Smith, Alex Service, and Kathy Rexford, who work in the clerk capacity for various boards and commissions. I look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Fortuna and the council." Siana Emmons. All right, our next one is National Bike Month Proclamation, and I think we have some students here that would like to talk, so after the proclamation is read, I'll bring it down to you and shake your hands and hand it to you, and then if you want to come up to the podium and say a few words, as many of you as want to, that would be awesome. Jeremy's going to read this one for us.
All right, National Bike Month, May 2022. Whereas bicycle travel is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion and noise, increase physical activity and improve public health, and whereas bicycling is part of the solution for addressing transportation needs, limiting impacts to infrastructure as well as conservation of energy, and whereas bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee, employee health and fitness, reduced vehicle commuting, parking, and healthcare costs, increased employee productivity, and there exists a strong relationship between the City of Fortuna and the Fortuna Elementary School District to create safe routes to school. And whereas a bike park and bike skills course have been built within the City of Fortuna at Newburgh Park, and whereas the City of Fortuna is involved in planning and building additional bike lane and trail infrastructure, which would increase bicycle commuting and recreation opportunities for Fortuna residents, and whereas the City of Fortuna has received statewide recognition for extending the school zone and reducing the speed limit to benefit all schools, and whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, which promotes the bicycle as a means of transportation and recreation, and May is also Clean Air Month, which promotes air quality. And whereas the City of Fortuna is hosting a kids' bike rodeo event at Newburgh Park on Saturday, May 14, and whereas Bike Month Humboldt features a number of recycling events for riders of all ages and skills to enjoy throughout the month at various locations. And now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Sue Long of the City of Fortuna, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as National Bike Month throughout Fortuna, and urge all citizens to support and participate in activities that contribute to the health of the community and the environment. Signed this second day of May 2022 in the City of Fortuna."
Hello, my name is Mason Cahill, I'm the ASB Spirit Leader. Bike to School Day started in 1997 as a way, as a way to bring awareness for the need for safe ways for people in a community to bike or walk to work or school. It also brings awareness to the importance of exercise.
Hi, my name is Chloe Dorner, and I'm the ASB Event Coordinator. Biking and walking to school helps students to incorporate the regular physical activity we need each day while also forming habits that can last a lifetime. Regular physical activity helps students build strong bones, muscles, joints, and decreases the risk of obesity.
Hi, my name is Gracie Olson, and I'm the ASB Secretary. Sometime in May, Fortuna Middle School will be participating in Bike to School Month. Students will be encouraged to bike, school, roll, or walk to school. Students who participate will earn middle money to spend at the FMS Student Store. Thank you for inviting us to your city council meeting.
Cameron Muller, Parks and Rec Director, I just want to take a moment to reiterate what's in the proclamation, thank you for May as Bike Month, about our kids' bike rodeo, which again will be next weekend, next Saturday, May 14. It'll be from 10 to 1 at Newburgh Park, and this is an opportunity for five to 12-year-olds to come and learn basic skills so that they can get confident and comfortable riding around in the streets and, and feeling like they can commute to, to school. There'll also be bike licensing there, we'll have Sport and Cycle there, they will be repairing any bikes that are in need. Everyone who arrives that does not have a helmet will get a free helmet. We'll also have a raffle and a giveaway for a bike that was donated by Sport and Cycle, so we hope to see everybody next Saturday, Newburgh Park, 10 to 1 for the bike rodeo. I've got some flyers here, I'll just put them over here by the agendas in case anyone wants to grab one. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Cameron. Did anyone else want to comment on this? Jenna, are you leaving? Okay. All right, thanks you guys, thanks for speaking. All right, our next one is a proclamation for Go Slow, Watch the Road. City of Fortuna Proclamation in recognition of Go Slow, Watch the Road Campaign. Whereas Humboldt County ranked number one out of 58 counties for traffic collisions involving a pedestrian according to data in 2018, has fatal collision rates double the national average and nearly triple those of California. And whereas effective transportation safety policies include a multifaceted approach, including infrastructure development improvements, enforcement of the laws and education, and the personal responsibility and behavior of those who use streets. And whereas drivers have an inherent responsibility to maintain a culture of respect and courtesy, avoid causing harm, and protect the community's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Humboldt County residents pride themselves on being values-driven, innovative, and proactive problem solvers who are responsive and responsible protectors of the community's residents and visitors. And whereas national statistics and local experience indicate that low-income people, people of color, older people, and people with disabilities are more likely to be killed by traffic collisions while walking or biking, and the countywide Traffic Safety Task Force is committed to addressing these tragic inequities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Fortuna recognizes that safely navigating our streets and sidewalks is a cooperative activity and traffic collisions are not inevitable. The Go Slow, Watch the Road Campaign created by the countywide Traffic Safety Task Force brings the City of Fortuna together with other local communities and adopting the goal to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe health and equitable mobility for all. Signed this second day of May 2022 at City of Fortuna. I think Brendan Byrd is accepting this one.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to accept this proclamation and to acknowledge the goals and efforts of the Humboldt County Safety, or Traffic Safety Task Force. It's really great to see, you know, our citizenry and everybody taking a moment to acknowledge the safety on our local roads. I know I can speak on behalf of the Public Works Department and the Police Department when I say we have and will continue to do what we can to do projects and, and, you know, promote enforcement and to increase safety on our local roads, but it's always going to be incumbent on all of us as users of our infrastructure to keep it safe and to keep all of each other safe as we're using it together. So, as it said here in the proclamation, go slow and, and watch the roads, and let's all do our part to keep our citizens and ourselves safe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brendan. All right, we have one more. Kiwanis 80th Anniversary Proclamation, and Mike Johnson's going to read this one for me.
Yes, last but certainly not least, and I'm proud to read this as a Kiwanian myself, and my wife is, two weeks ago, was inducted.
You can present it if you want to. Since you're a Kiwanian.
So, thank you. And in recognition of the 80th anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna, whereas the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna was established on May 5, 1941, and has served the communities of the Eel River Valley for the past 80-plus years, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna has worked with local schools to better meet the physical and academic needs of children, including the kindergarten book distribution program, providing refurbished bicycles for children who otherwise would not have access to a bike, and scholarships to graduating seniors. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna has partnered with Rotary Club of Fortuna and Seroptimist International of the Eel River Valley to help fulfill unmet needs within the local community, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna has partnered with Food for People and Lolita School District to provide weekend bags of food for children in need, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna, working with the city, has provided manpower to assist with the 3rd of July Children's Games, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna over the years has donated thousands of dollars in support of youth sports teams and activities throughout the Eel River Valley. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Fortuna conducts the annual rodeo, auto expo, pancake breakfast, quarter mania, and the 4-H spaghetti feed, raising thousands of dollars for the youth of the Eel River Valley. And whereas Kiwanis Club of Fortuna supports the annual Fortuna Fire Department Santa Slay Project. Now therefore be it proclaimed, Sue Long, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, proclaims appreciation of the Fortuna Kiwanis Club and all they do for our community. Signed this second day of May 2022, City of Fortuna, State of California, Sue Long, Mayor, City of Fortuna.
Thank you very much for the recognition. It's such a, it's such a pleasure to work with the city and other community organizations in fulfilling the needs of children in the community. That's what the Kiwanis Club is all about. Thank you once again for the proclamation.
You're welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, that was fun stuff. Okay. Thank you all of you who helped read proclamations, that was a lot all in one night, and no one wants to hear my voice that many times, so thanks. Oral comments from the public? If anyone has any comments of anything that's not on the agenda tonight, now would be the time to come up to the podium. Instead, we have Mass Exodus. Good night.
Good night.
All right, well, seeing people going out the door instead of up to the podium, we will close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. We have five items, does anyone wish to pull any of them? We have City Council Minutes, Report of Disbursements, Approving a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Fortuna and the Mad River Girls Fast Pitch Softball Association for Park Facility Use, A warding of professional service contract to GHD for the 12th Street Storm Water Enhancement Project, approving the updated Humboldt County Drug Task Force Memorandum of Understanding between participating agencies. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
C and E.
All right, Tammy, what's C?
C is the Memorandum of Understanding with softball, so I just wanted to ask, because I believe in men's softball, it says they have exclusive rights to the field, so I want to find out, I don't, I didn't see it in here, but I want to make sure that there's, it's not exclusive, you know, that the fields can be used when they're not using it?
That's correct, and in the MOU it does state that the fields can be used for city purposes, and because that their use will not conflict with our, our adult league softball use, it'll be a non-issue. So essentially, when they finish their season, we go right into our adult league, so there is no conflict of field space.
Okay, what about the youth games? If they don't have games there, can the youth have games there?
Um, yeah, the field, if they're not utilizing any field space for what their needs are for games or practices, then it's up for grabs for any other user if they want to utilize the fields.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since, since we're on that, the MOU, under license permits and taxes, it says contractor shall obtain, and I think, is that a typo, should that be association?
You're correct.
Buffy?
That should say association.
Okay.
I can change that before we send it off to be signed by the city, the city manager and the president. Yep, thank you.
So I don't, I want to know who put this one in here. Quality of food. Association shall put forth an effort to serve high-quality, attractively-prepared, and wholesome food, beverages, confections, and other healthy options. Do you guys know what a snack shack is?
That's fancy wording, isn't it? We're not going to really enforce the foods that they, that they're making.
Why did we put it there?
Yeah, they're going to eat, they're going to eat nachos and cheese and chips, that's fine. We're just trying to encourage them, since these kids are playing sports, to offer some healthy alternatives, so hopefully a child will grab that, you know, granola bar instead of the nacho cheese chips before they play a game, but it's, you know, it's just an encouragement piece, and it's in most of our MOU, so I figured we'd carry it over.
So no kale.
Well, at least I got a kick out of reading my packet when I got to that part. All right, any other questions on C? All right, Tammy, you had E?
Yes, E is approving the update, or updated Humboldt County Drug Task Force Memorandum of Understanding. I just wanted to let everybody know that that was, the funding for that was reallocated by the Board of Supervisors for another year, so we're very happy to have that, and thank you to all the supervisors for approving that. We were a little bit worried about it for a little bit, but we're very happily going to be able to fund that another year. So that's it.
Anyone else on item E or any other item? All right?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. Moving on to city council business, we have the second reading, which is Use of Military Weapons Policy. Who's taking this one?
I'll take it. Thank you, Mayor Long, City Council. So this is, the third time this item has come before you. The first was a submission of a draft policy, and the council conducted the first reading of the ordinance adopting the policy at your last meeting. Again, this is one of the state mandated police transparency bills. It went into effect this past January, and it essentially obligates the city to have a council-approved policy with respect to the use and acquisition of military equipment as that term is defined very broadly in the bill itself. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address those, but again, this is the ordinance that the council conducted a first reading of at your April meeting, and staff is recommending that you conduct the second reading and adopt the ordinance tonight.
So we kind of went over this last meeting, does anyone have any questions?
I have a question, I wasn't here for the last meeting.
This is true.
Can I still vote for the second, or do I?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item? All right, seeing them, we'll close public comment. Back to the council.
I'll make a motion to conduct the second reading and the draft ordinance 2022-753, by title only. Second.
We have a motion and a second, Buffy?
Ordinance 2022-753, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Title II Administration and Personnel of the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding Section 2.10.150 Military Equipment, approving a military use policy and determining the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Thank you, Buffy. Moving on to our second item, it's the first reading for a zoning map amendment.
Liz Shory, our Deputy Director of Community Development, will be providing the staff report.
Honorable Mayor and council members, so we have two actions for you tonight in this one agenda topic. One, the first one is, and they're related obviously, to amending the land use. The first action is amending the general plan land use map from residential low to residential medium. That's by the resolution that's in your staff report. And then the second is the zoning map amendment from residential single-family to residential multifamily, and that is by ordinance, which is also attached. So the applicant has requested a rezone of his property at 806 13th Street, from R16 to RM, in order to convert the existing residence to a fourplex. City is in support, and staff also recommends adding the neighboring parcel located to the west, 809 12th Street, as it makes sense, it's functioning as a fourplex currently, and would make sense to include that into the rezone to RM. Both parcels are located on the north side of N Street, and Buffy's going to turn on the overhead, and I'll show you the location map and the other maps that are also in your staff report. So both are located on north side of N Street, between 12th and 13th. That's on the north side of the downtown area, one block up from Main Street. So this side is in between, it's kind of, it straddles the R16 single-family zoning on the north side, that's the older part of the downtown area, and then the, the downtown retail commercial zoning on the south side of this parcel. So it would add a multifamily zoning to that area, and we feel that, I think it will demonstrate that it does create an appropriate transition between those two land uses where it makes sense, and utilizes, kind of makes the best use of those large craftsman-style buildings to add a little bit of density while still maintaining the integrity of the R16 zoning. Let's see, what can I discuss without looking, using the map? So the parcels are really similar, they're both 6,600 square feet in size. Again, as I mentioned, the craftsman-style buildings are really similar, you know, really appropriate for four-unit buildings. There we go, there's our overhead, that's the location map, and you can see that the two parcels are highlighted in yellow there. Fronting N Street, 13th Street is on the right side of the border of those two parcels, and then 12th Street is on the left. So you can just kind of see that, you know, this is in between, kind of straddles in between the, the historic residential downtown, single-family zone to the north, and then the downtown retail commercial to the south. Especially on N Street, you do see really a mix, so N Street is already a transition... So N Street is already a transition, you know, relating to the types of land uses, a blend of single-family, multifamily, and commercial uses on N Street. So this really just kind of fits in with those uses. Oh, I've got this way. What's that? There we go. So this is just a aerial view showing the parcels under consideration, located on N Street, 6,600 square feet in size, both parcels, and then the alley, there's an alley separating the two as well, and the alley also provides access to sides of those parcels. The site on the left, on 12th Street, is developed with a fourplex. It's a legally non-conforming use, and it would continue in this manner under the rezone. And then the parcel on the right is 806 13th Street. It is developed with a single-family residence that's operated as a group care home in the past, and most recently been used as a single-family residence, which is a principally permitted use under the R16. The rezone to multifamily would, as proposed, the applicant proposes a fourplex, and that would also, actually, that would be a principally permitted use of the RM zone. No new construction is proposed, but again, that building would be converted to a fourplex internally, so the exterior of the building would remain the same in that craftsman style. And it shows the land use of the parcel. It is currently R16, and you can see R16 is to the north, and on the sides, and then the retail commercial downtown zone is to the south. So, and you can see that the multi, what this would do is, just the block that's highlighted would be rezoned to multifamily, and that would create the transition between the two, R16 and the downtown. And this shows the existing development. So each parcel is developed with a two-story craftsman-style structure, you know, that really complements the, the period architecture of the, you know, sort of historic residential area to the north, and also fits in with the downtown zone. And so because of that craftsman style, you know, it creates a really smooth transition between the zones. So it still fits in with the R16, the single-family zoning, so you're not going to change the appearance of the structures. And at the same time, it increases the density. So, you know, it's really a useful way to create higher density, converting an existing craftsman, and creates affordable housing without undergoing new construction, without creating an overly dense development. And, you know, this create, or fills the, kind of a niche or a demand for affordable housing in a walkable area. So, you know, there, with, you know, the affordable housing issues that are going on, this is really becoming more of an apparent demand, or, you know, filling a need in cities throughout, you know, throughout the country. It's, actually, there's a name for it, it's called the missing middle. So it's a type of housing that has been kind of neglected, you know, in the post-war era, and the zoning really went from a blend of densities, especially around, you know, the older urban core, to a more strict commercial, and then either, you know, a single-family, and then relegating multifamily into kind of outlying areas, and, you know, not as really recognizing the need for multifamily. So with affordable housing now being such a big topic, you know, cities are looking for ways to easily create affordable housing, and this is one of the ways, you know, so it's walkable, there's, you know, tons of services that are just, you know, there's the commercial, you know, businesses, restaurants, stores, you know, the park is nearby, transit is nearby, you know, and people, you know, there's definitely a demand by a certain group, maybe small families or single, you know, single-person families, or families with small kids, who are, you know, maybe, you know, waiting or working to maybe save up to buy a house, or maybe they just want this kind of simpler lifestyle. So it's definitely, you know, we, we work with people who are kind of looking for this type of housing, and, you know, with this request for the rezone, it just kind of fit in with something that we've already been discussing at a staff level. So we're kind of, actually, kind of excited to see it. And then to have that, you know, the residence next door that fits in, we thought this would be a really good example to promote and to kind of support. So, um, this did go to the planning commission, and, as a recommendation, and they did vote to recommend that the council adopt the amendments. It was voted four to one, and the one dissent was basically due to parking concerns. And we evaluated the parking and looked at the demand. There is basically a shortage of parking on-site, you know, if we look at the code, the code does allow staff-level variance if there's a finding made that, you know, the need is reduced, or, you know, there's provision of parking, that it won't create an impact. And basically, so the, the existing fourplex on the right is, is currently operating with four sites, four parking spaces on-site, and they've got, you know, both parcels are located on corners with ample parking on N Street, and then on the, you know, on their side streets. There's up to seven spaces on the street, and then three to four spaces on-site. So with the four units, you know, at the most, probably having two, you know, up to eight, or two spaces per unit, eight spaces, but we count, you know, 11 on the streets. So we think that, you know, with, especially with this being in a walkable area, that, you know, the types of renters that would occupy the sites, you know, most likely, there would be the reduced demand, and the one house that's currently a fourplex is, you know, clearly, they've got fewer than eight cars. So I can, that kind of demonstrates that it, that would, that it would work there. So that was the one issue that did come up at the planning commission. And the applicant did submit some floor plans, that kind of, I think, shows, you know, that there is ample room on the site for, this is the first floor, and they're proposing a three, three-bedroom and then a two-bedroom. And same with the, the second floor, so they are not promoting, proposing any exterior remodeling at this point. And so basically, that's it. This is the exhibit, the general plan amendment, that is in your packet that goes with the resolution from residential low to residential medium. And then this is the zoning map amendment that is with the ordinance. We did send out property notices, the 300s that were mailed to the property owners, and it was published in the Time Standard and posted on the website and out at City Hall, and there were no, no members of the public, no comments were submitted, and nobody attended the hearing. So we think that it's an appropriate use, and we do recommend that you approve the amendments. So I'll pass that back to the council.
Thank you, Liz. Anybody have questions?
Yes, I do. With regard to 809 12th Street, that was, wasn't that either a new construction or a remodel?
Fire, burned down, they redid, rebuilt it.
And it burned, yeah, and then rebuilt, and, and the city then gave them a non-conforming permit?
Right.
And that's how that got to be a fourplex within a 1R6.
Right. It was a fourplex previously, and then they did submit some documentation that confirmed, or that followed our code, that allowed it to be a legally non-conforming use. So they rebuilt it as a fourplex.
Okay. So this will move it from the R16 into multifamily?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item?
Honorable Mayor, Council, Walt Wilson, Fortuna resident. That 13th Street property, wasn't that originally a care home?
It was at one time operated as a care home. I don't think it was originally constructed. It may have been a single family when it was originally constructed, but...
I mean, it's so big that, and has the zoning changed from whatever zoning a care home gets to residential?
Well, the zoning is R16, and it was most recently used as a single family, so, you know, that's the conforming, or the principally permitted use is single-family. So to operate as a care home again would require a special permit, but yes, I don't know the exact history of that care home, but it definitely was, in recent memory, used as a care home.
So a fourplex is better than a care home? Is that what we're getting at here?
I, no, I don't think that's the assumption. I think, right now, we have this proposed use as a multifamily, a fourplex.
Okay, thank you.
It's because that's what the property owners, it has asked for, not because one is better than the other.
I didn't get a vote.
Anyone else from the public?
Yeah, the applicant wasn't able to be here. He did go to the planning commission meeting and speak in support, obviously, for the project.
Okay. So seeing then, we'll close public comment. Does anyone from the council have any further questions? All right. Does anybody want to make the first motion?
Sure. Nobody else does? We've got to move this along. I'll move to amend the general plan use, land use map from the residential low RL to residential medium RM by adopting Resolution 2022-13. Read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Buffy?
Resolution 2022-13, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, amending the general plan land use map from residential low to residential medium. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, the second one?
I'll motion to amend the Fortuna zoning map with residential single-family R16 to residential multifamily RM by holding the first reading of ordinance 2022-754. Read by title only, and continue the public hearing to Monday, May 16, 2022, for the second reading.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Buffy?
Ordinance 2022-754, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, amending the Fortuna zoning map from residential single-family R-1-6 to residential multifamily R-M. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to city manager's report. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Long. We have a lot of meetings coming up, and so I wanted to put a graphic up. There's a number of meetings, so let me get to the right page here. So the next meeting that we have after tonight is on May 12, and that'll be a joint city council FBID meeting at 8:30 a.m., and that'll be in the council chambers next week, May 12. Then on May 16, we have two meetings. One of them will be a special budget meeting, that'll be at 9 a.m., and then that evening, we also have a regular council meeting at 6 p.m. On May 23, we also have a special budget meeting, so that'll be at 9 a.m. in council chambers, and then our next regular council meeting after that will be on June 6 at 6 o'clock p.m. Our next RONER Planning Commission will be May 10, 6 p.m. Our next MEASUREE meeting will be on September 20 at 5:30, quite a ways out there. And then our next RONER Community Recreation Park District is this week, on May 4 at 2:30 p.m. And all the meetings are in city council chambers. Okay, with that, I just had a few items to report. I wanted to just let the council know that we're working on, with, with foresters as a part of the CIP project for the Vancil site improvements, one of the things that we need to do for that project is remove some of the trees that have been causing problems with the gutter and the drainage. So we're working with those foresters to identify which trees to cut down within 100 feet of the reservoir, and we'll keep some larger trees, but remove some of the smaller trees and some of the more hazardous trees to reduce the amount of maintenance at the Vancil reservoir site. We're also working on a second grant application for the purchase of the adjacent parcel. As the council knows, you approved an application for an urban greening grant, so if that's not successful, there is another source of funding, the Environmental Enhancement and Mitigation Fund, so we'll be pursuing a grant application essentially to do the same thing, so the council would see a request for approval of an application for that grant project. And then, as we discussed, we had a, a special study session or workshop with the city council at 4:30 today, and there's a number of things that are happening, but we'll be bringing back the organic waste reduction and recycling ordinance at the next regular scheduled council meeting, and we're working on a number of programs and activities to get in, get into a position where we could be in compliance, compliance with SB 1383. So expect to bring the first reading of the ordinance on May 16. And then I'll just say, in closing, I'll say I was really pleased to be able to present at the State of the City Breakfast with our mayor and our police chief and supervisors, and I thought it was, I appreciate the chamber having organized that in-person meeting and getting back to business again, and doing, doing presentations at the State of City is a great opportunity to let the public know what's happening within the city and hear what's happening from supervisors and others. So I really appreciated that opportunity, and want to thank the chamber for providing that forum.
There were some good remarks on Facebook about, people saying how much they learned and how much information, and they appreciated it, so that was good.
Yeah, and we really, this, this year was a little bit different. In the past, we tried to tell everybody what we have done, but this year was really focused on looking forward, and that was part of the theme that we all worked on, is, you know, what's happening in the future, not what did we do in the past. So it was, it was nice to be able to have that look forward into the future.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work on that. Appreciated it.
Likewise.
Um, any future agenda items that we haven't talked about yet? All right, moving on to council reports, Mike Johnson.
Thank you. I was out of town for the last two weeks and really missed it, it sounds like. I'm going to have to get our city manager to send me a copy of the slide deck so I can see the presentation.
It is up on the chamber website, and I'd be happy to send you a link.
And as a segue from that, I was able to attend the in-person chamber meeting today along with a couple of our fellow council members and the city manager, and it was nice to, to see that and to be back together in person. And I did learn a lot about CASA that I did not know, and it was an enjoyable meeting from that standpoint. And for all the people here, CASA is going to be doing a fundraiser, and for your donations, Redwood Capital Bank and Coast Central Credit Union have agreed to match, so if they can reach a $50,000 goal, then that will be matched to turn that into $100,000, so. And CASA is an organization worth supporting, the court-appointed special advocates, and they provide a much-needed buffer and support for kids. And I was unable to attend the TCPW meeting and missed that, but couldn't make a connection online to get into that. So I don't have anything to report there, but I want to thank Mayor Long for sitting in for me for the HCOG meeting, and I look forward to getting back to that, which also could be in person by the May meeting, so, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. Mike Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 28th of last month, I had a Redwood Coast Energy Association meeting. We talked about the financial forecast for 2023. Rates and revenues are increasing. It looks pretty optimistic to what, what our reserves call for over the last several years, which we've fallen way behind with regard to those reserves. So we're expecting to catch up, and hopefully, by 2024 even be at the level that we need to be. Prices for 2023 with the CCA expect to increase around 23.5 percent with about half of that total. It's already been contracted for, or, or hedged is what it's called. I learned so much. I learned so much with being a member of RCEA with regard to energy and all of these terms, and it's, it is really involved. The 2024 increase looks to be around 14% with about a third of that already hedged. So we talked in the past about the Sandrini Solar Project, which is down in Bakersfield area, I believe. Anyway, that contract, the project has been delayed until 2023, so that contract will have to be rewritten. RCEA is a part, the contract is to purchase part of megawatts power from Sandrini to use here in Humboldt County, and it goes toward our carbon-free energy policy and to try to achieve that. We're entering into another long-duration storage agreement called Goal Line Project with five of 10 JPA members involved in that. Our goal will be to receive a maximum of 3.21 megawatts of solar power that RCEA will purchase, and that will then be dispersed to customers here in Humboldt County. I want to echo Mike's comments about the chamber meeting today, first in-person meeting after, what, two years? And so it's been Zoom, and it's so good to be back in in-person meetings. I want to, you know, congratulate Sue and Merritt and the chief. The city breakfast was amazing, and it was absolutely positive to look forward to what we're going to be doing, although we've done some amazing things in the past. But it is, it's refreshing to take that look forward as opposed to the home. So I thank you guys for that. That's it.
Jeremy?
Well, we have a F-Bid meeting workshop coming up on the 12th, so we'll all be together for that. I don't have any other news to report on that. And then I was out of town last week as well, so I missed the State of the City Breakfast, which is one of my favorite events, actually, because we do learn a lot and we get that touch point with the public, and it's always good to see, you know, in a snapshot of all the positive things that are happening in Fortuna. So I'll be going on the website to look at that as well. I don't have anything else to report, just that I missed out on that and hope to see what you guys presented on. And then I think, are we all going to League of California Cities this Friday?
I am. Tammy is. You guys? Mike, are you one?
I, I don't know. I might have to go out of town on an issue.
Okay. Well, we'll still have a good showing. Merritt, are you going to go? Okay.
That's all I've got.
All right, thanks. Tammy?
As I mentioned earlier, that we got our drug task force reallocated, officer reallocated through the Board of Supervisors. We also got our school resource officer reallocated, so we're very happy about that. Thanks, Chief, for all the hours you put in making sure that we got those taken care of, too. The State of the City Breakfast, one thing that I really like about that is it gives the community an opportunity to see how the city spends their money and how many grants we actually got. I have to thank our city manager. He's so good at applying for grants and getting those grants, and it's brought a lot of good stuff into our city. So thank you again for that. And I did miss the last city council meeting, but I was on business at Disneyland's, visiting with the mayor. Mickey said to tell everybody hi. And I will be attending that Friday meeting, and I'm looking forward to that, too. It's really nice to get back to being out in public again and actually getting to see people's faces in person. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thanks, Tammy. A lot of meetings, bridging connections with Fortuna High School. That was a cool one. It wasn't really a meeting. It was kind of an all-day session, working with kids, talking about college, talking about trade school, talking about those first jobs and how to interview. And I got to interview several kids, and there's actually a few that I am hoping to hire, so at least for summer work that might work into something more permanent. So I was excited to meet the kids. They had a really good setup. They had 41 business people, so I got to go two hats. I got to be the mayor and I got to be the businessperson. And so they took those 41 businesses and they divided the kids. They got to pick out of all of those options for maybe what they would want to interview for. And then the business owners interviewed the kids and actually got to take their resumes if you were interested and hand out your business cards and do all the things. So it was really cool, and it was just a really good day to have that. Things had been a little somber and to go hang out with high school kids to have all that energy and optimism and, you know, all the, they're just so bright and lively and all the things. So it was a great day. Because, and all of that, I attended three celebrations of life in the last week, so the high school thing was a much-needed diversion. Attended a redact meeting, housing committee meeting Friday, was Friday from 9 to 12. That one was painful. We have, we had 21 to 18, so the 18 are the common sense people, and we lost to the 21 crazies every vote. So they all think the state is here to help you. I don't know. I can't agree. Anyway, that is the end of our regular council, council meeting, and now we have two items on a closed session. We have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 54956.91 case. And we have conference with real property negotiator pursuant to section 54956.8 of the government code, vacant land along Ill River and 1320 River Rock Drive. Negotiating parties are the city manager, Merritt Perry, for the City of Fortuna, and Land MK is negotiating parties under negotiation or price and terms of payment. If anyone has any comments before we adjourn to closed session on either one of those items, you can come up to the podium. And seeing none, we will close public comment on that, and we need a...
Motion to adjourn to closed session?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session. All in favor?
All right.
All right, thanks. Hey, wait, can I talk to you real quick?
Thank you, Michelle.